Welcome to our regular meeting tonight. We've got a little bit on the agenda and we've got a lot of recognition in the room. We've got some swearing in, we've got special guests that are with us. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And please rise for the invocation from Chaplain Larry Jenkins and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Correction, I'm telling my guests.
One with Commissioner, Riley Mitchell. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. One. Let's follow it up. Dear Father, we're grateful and thank you for this day. We thank you, dear Lord, for your blessings. We ask you, Father, to be with this board, grant them knowledge, wisdom, understanding, to make sound decisions that benefit the community. We ask you, dear Lord, to bless all our local officials nationwide, to include state and county. Be with them, take them, place their protection around their family and members and loved ones. We ask you to bless our first responders, our police department, and those that continue to make the sacrifice to do the work in service to this community. And dear God, let us always remember that we are true to one nation under God and that we depend on you through all things, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, eternally and ever.
Please proceed. Item one is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Motion for approval.
I've got a motion, got a second. I have one addition to the agenda. Under Presentations, it's going to be item A, vape shop update. Item B will be the swearing in and item C will be the recognition of our SROs and our TCOs. Commissioner, Marley, would you like to amend your motion to include that?
I'm in my motion to include, um, the addition to the presentation.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor. Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Right into manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. And first page of the manager's report outlines the community corner. We have a few very exciting events coming up. The Chamber of Commerce Chili Cook-Off is set for November 9th from 12 to 4:00 p.m. at their Vegas. One of the ones that I'm most excited to attend is the upcoming Heritage Park ribbon cutting set for November the 20th, 4:00 p.m. Stay tuned. Parade of Lights, they're taking registrations for our December 7th Christmas Parade. Trunk a treat is this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30 across the street at Rockfish Elementary. Culvers is now open. They'll get you some smashed burgers and cheese curds. Second page of the manager's report provides updates on our town Hope Mills projects. We will, uh, we have the final presentation or at least the resoning process, if we're grabbing as well. Next manager's report, we'll move into the annexation process. That's intended to explain to the general public what those processes are. Third page is, um, an outline of discussion of projects that we've held at Plan Review. I will, um, announce that the Historic Preservation Committee ordinance has successfully passed planning board. It will be on the agenda next month. And the last page does always outline the NCBLT construction updates. I will be updating those soon with the Cannon Road and Rockfish and Goffe projects. And that does conclude the manager's report. Thank you.
Before we get into board comments, I want to recognize our State Senator Val Applewhite is with us. I would also like to recognize Representative from NC House District 45, Francis Jackson. Both are with us tonight. All right, board comments, I'll start with Commissioner Marley.
Oh, will you have me there? Uh, 'cause we've got a busy agenda.
Commissioner Skorola.
Uh, it's good to see many people in the audience tonight. At Old Mill Days, uh, I didn't have my dump tank, it was a little chilly out, so humble apology. Guys have to wait to spring if you want to dump me in the dump tank. Also, as in the manager's report, Chili Cook-Off for the Chamber of Commerce, we need, we need more people, so we want more chili, so speaking to people on the internet too. We need some people to sign up for the Chili Cook-Off. And this time, I'm not judging, but our own mayor will be one of the judges. I, I don't want to wear this stretch pants this year, so he can, he can do that, so, uh, that's all I have, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Skorola, Commissioner Craven.
I'd like to thank and congratulate our 14 and under baseball team, the Carolina Dark Horses, for winning the Top Gun Winter World Series in Rocky Mount this past weekend with a score of 12 to 0. Just give that my hand.
Thank you. Mayor Protan, Dr. McCray.
I'll be brief. Um, it's good to see everyone, and I know that this room will probably be empty before we get to our presentation of community reports. So I would just like to announce that on November the 9th, the Hope Mills Prime Motors is hosting a food drive with Second Harvest School Day, and it's only like six of us, so, um, it was very, did we have any families that were silent?
Uh, the last, uh, drive we did on 21st, we hit 636 families, which is roughly about 1,800 people.
Yeah. Oh, anyone wants to volunteer, or if you know people that need volunteer, I would love to see them today. On November the 9th, yes. Thank you.
All right. So then it comes down to me. Before I make some comments, Commissioner Legg is now with us tonight. He is resting at home. So I just wanted to make that announcement. Old Mill Days was a success on Saturday with a lot of folks out there in the park. And that, um, recognition goes to Debbie Jones from the Hope Mills Police Foundation. It goes to all of our agencies here in Hope Mills. Maxie Dove was a big part of that too, along with Parks and Rents. And it was really a good day and it was a lot of comments made and a lot of stuff to, uh, to plan for future events. We also had a ribbon cutting for Culvers. We've got another one coming up this week, Freddy's. Now I want to share something. I hear a lot that, that Hope Mills is tired of fast food. Well, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say this because I know both. If that is so true, why are people waiting 45 minutes to an hour at Culvers and Freddy's? I don't know. It's been that way since Freddy's opened and Culvers on Saturday was just all the way out to Millstone. But there is a good part, I shall share this, it's easy to get in McDonald's now. Just so let's just, it's very easy to get into McDonald's. There's been a lot of talk about growth and development at Hope Mills. And I mean, a lot of talk from media, from newspaper, everyone's writing articles about us, about what we're doing as a community. Some of that recognition is tonight, with recognizing what we're doing with our schools. And I wanted to propose that we highlight this in February between the Town of Hope Mills and our Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce, which our Hope Mills Chamber is present here, the president, and have a State of the Community presentation in February to highlight all the great things that have happened in this past year. And I'd like to see that we do that together, along with Hope Mills Chamber and the Town of Hope Mills. So that's kind of a consensus item that I just wanted to share with the board. Because we should tell our story, because we are doing great things in Hope Mills, we truly, truly are, and we're making a difference in a lot of people's lives. And look at the businesses that are, that are wanting to come here, that are here now, that are looking to come here, and the families that choose Hope Mills as their destination to raise a family, to work, to enjoy life, and they're choosing us. So I just kind of wanted to say that. Moving on, we'll go into our presentations. Item A, this belongs to Chief. On, on a vape shop update.
Yes, sir. So, uh, good evening, thank you. So, uh, District Attorney Matthew Scott is here from Robinson County, and he's gonna talk about this after I give you a little background. District Attorney Scott was instrumental, probably, um, if not the first district attorney in North Carolina, um, one of the first, as well as, uh, not just North Carolina, but other states as well, to take on this very dangerous issue with the vape shops. So, um, all vapes are extremely dangerous. They're, uh, filled with chemicals, they're unregulated, um, but we, uh, about six, eight months ago, Mr. Scott approached me and asked for help with my task force, which is the Southeastern North Carolina Biomechanic Task Force, to address issues at the vape shops. Uh, he had received multiple complaints from people in Robinson County, and there were multiple overdoses from teenagers and, and other folks that are using these vapes. So, um, with the help of the task force and extensive work done not only by the Hope Mills Police Department, but Fayetteville as well, we partnered with multiple other agencies and, and federal agencies as well, including the DEA, and we conducted undercover purchases from 108 vape shops in Robinson, Cumberland and Hope Counties, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Blading Counties. After those undercover purchases, we executed in, in two days, we executed over 100 search warrants at those vape shops. The results of that, to date, and this is still an ongoing investigation, we've seized 27,000 kilos, which is 59,400 pounds of illegal marijuana products out of those vape shops, as well as $600,000, uh, I'm sorry, uh, $600,000 in cash and over $2.9 million in C bank accounts to date. The DEA says this is the largest marijuana seizure of theirs in the state of North Carolina all time. So what these, what these stores are doing is they're usurping the marijuana laws and they're advertising that these products are, are legal. And that they're selling, and in North Carolina, it's 0.3% of, under the THC content would make it legal, but they're, they're advertising these products as all being, um, under the legal limits, when in fact they're not. We sent them to the DEA lab, nor some are triple and quadruple, um, over the, the legal limit. And they're actually selling regular marijuana right out of the stores, um, right on their shelves with, but advertising that, that it's, that it's legal product. The other thing they're doing is that they're, they're, they're marketing and appearing their marketing to teenagers and young adults, using brand name cereals and potato chips like Waze and Fruit Loops and Skittles, all products that the kids use on, on a normal basis. They're using these marketing tools to draw the attention to these kids to buy these products, when in fact what they're selling them is illegal marijuana, which, um, which is resulting in multiple, multiple overdoses because they're mixed with those other harmful chemicals. So, uh, this has become a very serious issue, and I'll, I'll tell you that how brazen the shops are, that we executed these search warrants on September 16th, 17th, and 18th. I sent our Hope Mills officers back into the Hope Mills shops last week, and we, and one of the shops that we seized all that product from was selling illegal marijuana again, and we confiscated, um, we confiscated somewhere over 59 pounds of more illegal products as well as cash. So they're, they're purposely selling these things, uh, for the people in this area, and it's creating a, a huge health concern, um, especially amongst young people with all they use. And this is why it's instrumental that we continue to address these issues with our partners, um, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Scott to come up and talk about that. District Attorney Matthew Scott, not his account.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. As Chief said, it's an ongoing investigation, so I will not be commenting at all as to, as to what was found and what not, what was not found. However, what I do want to stress is how this started. Uh, it started with in Robinson County EMS having to go to high school. EMS should not have to go to high schools. And it should not have to go to high schools because you have kids in catatonic states, because they're taking vapes that are not legal for them to have, and in the classroom, and they're, and they're using these things, uh, and becoming unresponsive. That should not be occurring. And so the question is, why is it occurring? And it's occurring because we have an unregulated industry that needs to be addressed. Uh, and local law enforcement does not have the resources to do this by its own, uh, and so it needs help. Uh, and so when I was able to start to speak with the principals in our high school, in our high schools and schools in Robinson County, every one to a person, they said the number one problem they had in their schools was vapes. Vapes. Even got our school resource officer to send me vape reports of how many they, how many they confiscate, um, and it is an unreal number. Uh, and that's just the ones that the school resource officers are confiscating, that's not the ones that the teachers are getting and just trashing because it's so overwhelming. Uh, so why are we here? Uh, and, and we're here because of it being not regulated enough and law enforcement not having the resources available to attack the situation. Uh, so that's why when we looked at how we can handle Robinson County, Chief Dollinger and his task force was crucial in allowing these local municipalities to, to come together and marshal resources to attack a common problem. Uh, and that's what was done in this case. And I know I can speak on behalf of the District Attorney's Office in Robinson County, and I'm, and District Attorney Billy West also was a part of this in Cumberland County, and I can tell you, it is a, it is a God sin to have local law enforcement banding together for a common, common purpose, uh, to tag, to attack a common problem that is affecting everybody, but it's affecting children, uh, in elementary schools, in elementary schools. I haven't had to address it in my own family, and, and parents who've come to your office crying because their kids are hooked on this stuff. Hooked on it. And you, we do not know now the effect it's gonna have on the brain of these young people. Because I can tell you, I've spoken with a psychiatrist at Brenmore Hospital in Jacksonville, North Carolina, who said at one point she had a whole wing of her hospital, a whole wing of her hospital dedicated to nothing but adults who were in there because of psychosis brought upon by these Delta 8, 9, 10 vapes. So if they're to do that to an adult, what's it gonna do to a child? Uh, so I want to thank Hope Mills for, for allowing Chief Dollinger, Chief Dollinger and the task force for coming to address this problem. I will say, because we've got General Assembly members here, the General, I am so hopeful and glad the General Assembly is, I take, uh, they are addressing this, there's a bill before the General Assembly now. I've been up to the General Assembly, they're carrying on it, and it made me feel good to see that it was a bipartisan effort because this is a, this is a bipartisan problem. Uh, and so I feel confident that it'll get addressed sooner rather than later. Uh, so thank you for your time.
I thank you, sir. Just think about all the lives that have been saved on the efforts that you guys have collaborated, collaborated. Just think about that.
Just, just one final note. Most of these products are being shipped and imported here from China, which, which ironically are banned in China. So they, they ban them in their own country because of the danger, but they ship them here for profit, and then our stores are putting profit ahead of the safety of their customers, and that's what we need to address through the legislature.
Appreciate that, Chief, and I'm so glad that this presentation was presented not only to members of our General Assembly, but also to our school board members and our Cumberland County school members. And there was one else that's in the room too. Yeah, this is, this is not a partisan issue, not at all. It's a community issue. It's all of us together working on something that's came, that's coming to our schools and it's affecting our community. And it's not only a county issue, it's a multi-county issue. So that's how big this thing is, and I'm so glad that you guys got together, and, and it's not over, I'm sure. It's still ongoing. Okay. Next, uh, next item is B, swearing in of Hope Mills police officers. I'll come down. Chief, you gonna bring them up?
Yeah, I'll call them up, uh, as usual. Our first officer is Justin Jones. Justin has 16 years of, uh, law enforcement experience, uh, coming from the Laurinburg Police Department. Uh, he has a, a bachelor's degree in science management communications, and he is here tonight with his wife, Melody, and daughter Jennifer. Our next officer is Tyreek Carmine, who has one year of law enforcement experience and comes to us from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. He is, uh, here with his wife, Nina. Right, did she make it? She's supposed to be, she, she hasn't made it. Um, he did 10 and a half years in the, uh, United States Army, and he is a certified pilot. Um, I'm gonna be trying to budget it for a helicopter or a plane or something. Put that in your, uh, your, uh, your back there. Uh, our next officer is Carly Lendoff. Um, she has one and a half years of law enforcement experience coming to us from the Fairmont Police Department. She's one of our, uh, SROs, and she is here with her son Connor and daughter Chloe. And then our final officer tonight is Brian Blacksmith, who has three, uh, years of law enforcement experience, also coming, coming to us from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. Uh, he did six years in the United States Army. He is here with his wife, Ava, daughter Eleanor, and son, Jackson.
Chief, hold on. How many years?
About 25, almost.
25 years of experience coming back. Pretty good.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's A. Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have to leave, I'm gonna, when I say I, unless I say your name, it's gonna be in the picture. I say your name. Justin Anderson. Tyreek Carmine. I solemn swear, that I will be alert and vigilant, to enforce criminal law of this state, in the state that I will not, that I will not, in any manner, on account, bias, prejudice, that I will support, to maintain the Constitution, and the laws of the United States, and the high standards of the Constitution, and the laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully, impartially discharge the duties of my office, as a law enforcement officer, as a law enforcement officer, as a station position. Tell me. Tell me. For the Town of Hope Mills, accordingly, according to the best of my skills, ability, and judgment, so help me God. Sir, help me God. Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to take pictures, please come up and take pictures. There you go. Keep going. Anybody else? You want pictures, come up in your area. Now if you want pictures with them, you can come up and stand with them and have pictures made too. Guys, you gotta sign your roster, can you just come back up to, to the, to the court exit? We're on the counter there. We got some presentations for our school resource officers. Chief, you wanna come up?
Sure. I'm gonna have to call my name. So our five, uh, I'm sorry, six school resource officers is Sergeant Elizabeth Walker, Officer Phoenix Nichols, Officer Winford Nichols, cousins they are, Officer Delbert Gray, Officer Renee Bryant, and our newest one, Officer Carly Lendoff.
officers are in our schools. Because when parents drop their kids off at the store, they go on to work, and the one thing that they want to be assured is that the school they dropped their child off is safe. For a servicemember, a servicemember who is serving his country or her country in a foreign country tonight, who has family members, worried, doesn't have to worry about how safe that school is. They can go about their mission and know that the school is safe. We just had a presentation about vape shops and how that affects our community. But what we had here is, is our SROs who are in the schools, making relationships with our kids and the staff, and I will tell you that everything that I have heard, that everything that I have heard from practice, and I heard a lot on Saturday in Hope Mills Days, the same way, is we are so thankful that we took the lead, that we took the lead and established this, uh, in the school. Let me tell you, the presence is known, they're welcome, not only in the schools, this goes beyond the school, it also is at our football games and after-school events. It's just not only in the school, it's in different ones. So I just wanted to take the time tonight on behalf of the board to officially recognize each of you for the jobs that you're doing in our schools, because that is such an important mission to take care of our kids. I don't know how more, how much more you can do, and I just wanted to do that tonight on our board. So thank you very much. Any family here that would like to take any pictures? Any family here that would like to take any pictures? Or anybody else who wants to take a picture with you guys, can hold up your, your flags. There you go. And you've got hot stuff. Okay.
So the, the next group, uh, Mr. Mayor is our, uh, our traffic control officers that direct traffic across the kids in front of the schools. Um, and there are Genevieve Pilgrin, she's a Cumberland Mills Elementary. Um, Marques, who serves at Rockfish Elementary, and also at, uh, Seaway Tire in the afternoon. Bryce Altman, who serves at Rockfish Elementary. Um, Anthony Jones, who serves at Southview High School, and Orlando Avery, who serves at Baldwin Elementary. And, uh, there are some other folks that weren't able to make it tonight, but, uh, we, we do have a bunch of others.
In concert with our school resource officers, we have our traffic control officers. Because we know how important those streets are when parents are either picking up or dropping off or getting those buses out on a timely manner. This is where these folks come into play, because they're out there in these uniforms, directing traffic on our streets. And they're members of our community, just like our school resource officers. And they work in concert together, all for the safety of our schoolkids, family, the teachers, the staff that either drive that bus or work in touch at school. That's how important this is. I know how important it is, because I taught at Jeff Ritt last year. I saw exactly what the SROs do in the high schools, because I witnessed it every day that I went to Jeff Ritt. And I went there twice a week with these business classes for these. These are invaluable when you're trying to move cars in and out in buses. And I just wanted to highlight that tonight and thank each of you for being a member of our community. Thank you, sir. You guys want to take pictures? Now, I'll say one other thing before we go, they can also work after-school events if you need them. Now, we're not done. We're not done. Chief, mic up here. We're not done. Did I forget to do something? Yep. I got a letter I wanna read. Dear Chief of Police Dolinger, members of the Hope Mills Police Department and the Mayor's Office. I have had the honor of communicating with the Hope Mills Police Department Chief of Police Stephen Dolinger and the members of the Hope Mills Police Department. Chief Dolinger is a dedicated chief of the Hope Mills Police Department. He demonstrates professionalism and professional leadership with the Hope Mills Police Department and with the officers under his command. I am honored, privileged, to get a package sent to me from the Hope Mills Police Department Chief of Police. I consider the Hope Mills Police Department my family. Chief Dolinger was kind and friendly and grateful to keep in touch with and become friends with him. And the entire Hope Mills Police Department, I consider my family. That's a pretty darn good testament. That's who we are. And Hope Mills, that's exactly who we are, all of our departments. It's who we are and it's what we do. We are family. Thank you again for your kindness and respect and support. I consider you a brother officer, officer, and a friend and a role model. You are a cop's top, a Hope Mills top. That's pretty doggone good. Because in the army, we call it a soldier's soldier, don't we, really? Do it. It's my honor and a privilege to call you and consider you a friend and a fellow brother officer and a dedicated individual. It's an honor to get to know Chief Dolinger by hearing about leadership training going on in Hope Mills, North Carolina, by Chief Dolinger and by my friend, retired New York Police Department Transit Bureau Police Chief Joe Fox, who attended leadership training with Chief Dolinger and spoke about me. And so do Chief Dolinger, who spoke about me to other officers, command staff. Thank you very much respectfully and publicly, Billy Probet. I'm sure you know him.
Yeah.
Yes. This was a pretty good letter of support dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Chief Dolinger was tireless. And I'm careful. I solved the problem with our school resource officers. And our traffic control officers, that we learned about the mayor. We knew that we had to fix this problem, and we had to fix it together as a community. And it was gonna be partnership. No time to finger pointing, no time to say how we did here. It's where are we going from here? Because our schools are open and honest, and we have to be ready. That took a lot of hours, it took a lot of dedication, it took a lot of professionalism, too, yeah. It happened overnight. We have a plaque here that honors Chief Dolinger. I'm gonna read it. I'm trying not to finger all of it. The township of Hope Mills, North Carolina, honoring Police Chief Stephen Dolinger for transformative leadership and tireless dedication. Your innovative approach and steadfast commitment and profoundly enhanced our community's safety and trust setting a benchmark for excellence in service. To protect and to serve. Sir, come forward. I wanna present this to you.
Thank you very much. But I can't do this without my, my team, my teammates. And recognize, yes, but no, I mean, all of them are not here. There's a bunch of things that are, uh, put out there.
So that your family?
Yeah, well, I like that. That your family. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I don't mean I dropped it by accident.
All right. Public comments is next.
I'm taking five, I'm taking five.
We only have one speaker tonight, and that would be Greeley Mitchell, former commissioner, Greeley Mitchell.
I'm taking five, just kidding. Greeley Mitchell, four zero five six, Williamville, Hope Mills. Actually, I was ready to come up with my regular call, but believe it or not, y'all, the town is doing so many good things and great things. No need to talk about those things that we can't improve on tonight, but I'll be back. But I wanna, um, take the time to say thank you to the town for partnering with, as president of the Hope Mills Kiwanis Club. Thank y'all so very much for partnering with us. Thank y'all for agreeing to become a corporate sponsor. And most of all, I wanna thank the Hope Mills Fire Department, because without y'all, our barbecue and fundraising would not have been a success. And what we're doing now, under Kiwanis, we are going to the schools, we are trying to create a mentorship program to address the exact same issue that Chief was talking about. Y'all be surprised, last year, I went to a teacher. I said, you know, you got marijuana problems. This individual looked at me, he said, you know, that's what they do. It took every ounce of restraint to not hit the joke outside of here. Because what you do is take action. That's when I really got hard into Kiwanis, because our kids are at risk. I don't have many kids in school, but every kid that I've ever taught, every kid that I've ever coached, is still those kids in school today. And we're the ones that can make a difference, community. I need you all to get involved. I need y'all to join some type of club in that school, make an impact, because our kids need mentorship. I'm working with Monica Hall and Clara Hines, starting our first initial mentorship program. We're gonna start out small, test it, and our goal is to expand. One of our goals is to teach the kids how to motivate and advocate for the kids that cannot advocate for themselves. They need our help. And last, and not least, we always talk about the homeless problem. Community, we have more than a homeless problem. We are not dealing with the working poor. There'd be eighteen hundred families, that was my first time doing a food drive, ration breakdown of military of that nature. I have never seen a suburban, working poor families before in my life. It is tragic. I had to sit in Dolores's chair a couple of weeks ago feeling for it, and he demonstrated duty. But that week outside in that chair, I did, I dealt with fifteen families. And every family said, I can pay my rent. I can pay my utilities, but I can't put food on the table. The pandemic is still taking care of the working poor. Thank you.
Thank you, former commissioner Greeley. Next item is consent agenda. Item A, consideration approval of the Board of Commissioners meeting minutes, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, plus session minutes, no attachments. Item B, consideration approval of the Board of Commissioners meeting, October seventh, twenty twenty-four, special meeting, and October seventh, regular meeting, tab two. Item C, acceptance of monthly financial report, September twenty twenty-four, tab three. And D, approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four dash oh nineteen, fixing date for a public hearing for annexation of A twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, old block LLC pin zero four zero five eight seven eight zero seven four zero zero zero, under tab four. Do I have motion to approve consent agenda? Second? On a favor? See none opposed, motion carries. We go into whole business, which is item A, update regarding a town of Hope Mills comprehensive strategic plan. We put this on the agenda last meeting, so we kinda wanna update today, tonight, on what direction we're going in, and that's gonna come to either Chancellor or Drew.
You will handle it, and then I'll lead off, or I'll end up with, uh, some statements as well.
Okay, so as the council approved at the last meeting, uh, we've gone ahead, uh, some of y'all may remember Ashley Anderson that started that strategic plan. Well before the pandemic, we got about, I don't know, four or five months in, and then the pandemic, so we put it on hold. And then the pandemic lasted a lot longer than we thought it would, so we just ended it all together. And then after that, the previous mayor started to do a strategic plan with the Leaking municipalities. Um, that didn't detail as much as we wanted it to do, I don't think. But nevertheless, um, since the last meeting, I have contacted Ashley, she's so excited to get this started again. She still has all the notes from when we did it before. And Chancellor and I are gonna have a meeting with her probably sometime in early November to get it started. And then we'll, um, set a game plan from there, but it looks like we may wanna get past the holidays before we get into the major, um, working on it. And we may incorporate it in with the budget process and the, um, bond referendum, strategic planning, working into how we're going to determine, um, what we want to qualify for the, uh, for the bonds, and then work it all together. So that's where we are right now. So it's, it's moving, and it's just a, a timed thing right now to get it started. But, um, right now, we're thinking, once we meet with, um, Ashley, we'll get a game plan together. And then, um, once we come and get a tentative schedule, we'll bring it back to the council and see if that's, um, that's their direction we wanna go. That's where we are right now.
Thank you, Drew. Chancellor, do you have anything?
Yes, um, I just wanted to kinda speak on the importance of strategic plans. Um, there's three main things that we look for. Um, informed decision-making, stability, and prioritization. Um, a comprehensive strategic plan can help elected officials make informed decisions by providing with a long-term vision for the community. Can also provide predictability stability by serving as a guide for decision-making, even if there is turnover in leadership. And finally, a robust plan can also help prioritize needs at once by providing a complete picture of a municipality's infrastructure and other systems vital to meeting the needs of the community. That's the overarching umbrella that we're moving forward under as we create the strategic plan, and something that you do hear a lot in terms of the current position and vision of this town. Something we're gonna do together. And so I look forward to moving forward with this and coordinating with the board to, uh, complete this.
Thank you, Chancellor, because that one word, we wanna do this together. We're gonna do it together as a, as, as a board, as staff, and as a community. That's what together is. So they'll be bubbled in for the, well. Any, uh, comments from the board? Under new business, item A, consideration approval of the town of Hope Mills on-call engineering list, tab five. Chancellor Jules?
Um, our Stonewall Commissioner, Beth Brown, let's get to the agenda.
Good evening. Um, so this is just an update to our on-call list that we have in place. We do that, we keep it in place for two years, then we update, uh, that list. It's just, um, providing any of the staff that needs engineering, design services, surveying, things like that. Um, we have a list of already qualified folks. Um, we are eligible for grant funding and things like that. Um, and we can use the on-call list to acquire those services more quickly rather than having to go through an R. rather than having to go through an RFQ process for each separate project. So these folks have already been qualified. We still go through the same purchasing procedures, but this just gives us options that have already been pre-qualified.
Do we need to take action and approve it, or is it consensus?
You guys, you guys will need to approve it for us to be able to use it, um, especially if it comes to grant funding situations.
No, I'm making motion to approve the town of Hope Mills on-call engineering list.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed? Thank you, ma'am. Item B, consideration of adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eighteen, setting the meeting schedule for calendar year twenty twenty-five, board commissioners meeting, tab six.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Commissioners. The schedule that you have before you, you may notice that it is, um, eliminating meetings in July. The ever innovative town of Hope Mills was trying to keep up with industry standards and our neighbors and, um, some other communities that also take off in July. But obviously, it is the purview of the board whether or not you want to move forward with that. And so that is how the schedule is presented this weekend.
Thank you, Ashley. So the calendar for next year is no meetings in July? If the board would like to adopt that one, or look for one meeting in July, and one in August?
I like the July, um, I know I said something to you all on the side about this before, but I like the, the full coverage July.
Good.
I'd like to make the motion to approve, to approve the adoption of the resolution R twenty twenty-four eighteen, setting the meeting schedule for the calendar year twenty twenty-five for the board commissioners meeting.
Do we have a motion, we have a second, we have any more discussion? Commissioner Craver?
So we're not gonna have a meeting at all in July? Why, don't you think that our, the citizens think that we should have our normal two meetings a month?
Well, Commissioner Craver, if I might add, um, not pre-scheduling the meeting doesn't prohibit the board from calling a meeting if there is business that needs to come before the board. It's just not pre-said, so.
So we could actually have a meeting in July then?
Absolutely, that's up to the purview of the board.
Okay. I, I, I just don't feel right not having a meeting when we're supposed to have two meetings a month. With the last day, thank you.
The same is true back in, as we get into the budget workshop, workshops in January, February, and March, we have a lot of additional meetings in the first three months that are, that are not scheduled, but they're a budget workshop related. Okay, all in favor? Seeing none opposed? We have it adopted. Next item is item C, authorizing the town manager to accept a bid from M and E Contracting, Incorporating, and Executing a Contract for Construction Services in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars, and approval of corresponding budget amendment number ten, tab seven.
Mayor, um, Don Sisto, Public West Director, will be addressing item C and item B on the agenda.
Um, the modification for the front was not part of the ongoing ADA transition plan. It actually was not going to be this year's, um, portion of the plan, but was accelerated because of security issues. Once we got the pricing for the, um, at the reception side, um, and the pricing came in good, we were asked to go back and get somebody to look at the permitting side as well. So we've got one contractor, but it's actually two separate contracts, um, just happened to fall on this one.
Go ahead.
So would you want to attach a tab, seven hundred eight?
Yes, I'm just.
Tabs, it's to those two tabs.
Well, one of them is C, so we'll have to approve the twenty thousand nine hundred twenty-eight first, and then we'll approve, uh, item, item D.
Now, I'm making motion to authorize the town manager to accept a bid from M and E Contracting, Incorporate, and execute a contract for construction services in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred twenty-eight and associated budget amendment number two.
Okay. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed? Motion carries. Item D, authorizing the town manager to accept a bid from M and E Contracting, Incorporate, and execute a contract for construction services in the amount of nineteen thousand, and approval of corresponding budget amendment number eleven. Anyone make, want to make a motion?
I'm making motion for that as well. Authorize the town manager to accept the bid from M and E Contracting, Incorporate, and execute a contract for construction services in the amount of nineteen thousand and associated budget amendment number eleven.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Item E, authorizing the town manager to accept a proposal from Motorola and execute a contract for new police radios in the amount of sixty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-six and associated budget amendment number twelve, which also includes seventeen thousand for additional budget needed to cover the prior radio purchases in July twenty twenty-two for a total budget amendment of seventy-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and approval of corresponding budget amendment number twelve, and that's under tab nine.
Mayor, before Chief Dollinger speaks, I would like to highlight, this was a, um, initiative that we tried to achieve through the grant program, but we were not eligible. And so we did exhaust all possible methods before we executed for a construction.
I remember that, Chancellor, I remember putting the grant in for that. So we just, were you called short as far as eligibility?
It just was the, the criteria, we were not, uh, we didn't qualify for the criteria, but we did approach that upon the avenue first.
Go ahead, Commissioner Craver.
Did that, um, grant include, uh, non-payment in July of twenty twenty-two? Or why were they not paid for? I don't know why it's twenty twenty-four, two years ago.
We didn't have as many officers as we have today back in two thousand twenty-two. We had added a lot of police officers, a lot of SROs, and they needed new radios. These radios, as you can see, we're getting ten or eleven. I think it's ten radios and sixty-two thousand dollars, because not only are you getting the radio itself, you're getting the equipment and the setup for each radio. So what you're referring to in July two thousand twenty-two, this purchase, your approval is the sixty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars for these new radios. When I went back to do this budget amendment, I looked at the previous purchase of the radios, and it went over the amount budgeted. So we're doing another seventeen thousand to cover where we went over the budget the previous time we purchased the radios. So you're doing two things with this budget amendment. You're purchasing, you're allocating funds for the new radios, and you're making up the difference for where we went over the budget with the previous purchase of the radios. So the total budget amendment is for seventy-nine thousand one fifty, but the new radio is the sixty-two. The correction budget amendment is for seventeen.
I have no problems with the new ones. My problem is, why are we just now catching something that was not paid in twenty twenty-two? Why was that not brought up and paid for in twenty twenty-three, if that was the case?
Because this is a project later, and it stays open until the project is closed. So we're correcting in that.
Project's still open, right?
It's part of the, um, offer funds.
Why was this not brought out in a twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five budget? Would have that not have been carried?
It's not part of the annual budget, it's a separate project budget that stays open until it's closed.
And that really does make any sense to me, but I don't think it works.
Any other comments?
Now, I'm making motion that we authorize the town manager to accept the proposal from Motorola and execute a contract for new police radios in the amount of sixty-two thousand one hundred and three and associated budget amendment number twelve, which also includes seventeen thousand for additional budget needed to cover the prior radios purchased in July of twenty twenty-two for a total budget amendment of seventy-nine one fifty.
A motion second, we have any further discussion about this item? Anything else? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? Just want to thank, uh, Public Fayetteville PD, Chief Braden, because we hired so many, we did not even have radios to give to the officers. And Fayetteville PD came through for us, but they use the same radios, and they loaned us, um, a bunch of SRO officers for, for communicate. So Chief Braden and Fayetteville PD, she's been committed for that partnership with us.
And speaking of Chief Braden from, from the city of Fayetteville, it's excellent to see both police departments working together. It really, really is. Not only with the radios, but with SROs, after-school events, coverage. Really, really great to see that both of you are working together. If he needs something, he'll call you. If you need something, you call him. If Kevin needs something, he's gonna call you both. All right, next is item F, approval of budget amendment number thirteen for six thousand two hundred dollars to cover costs associated with the police leadership course by Joseph Fox, funds to be allocated from the drug forfeiture account, tab at ten.
I will ask Police Chief Dollinger to come back to the podium and get his attention instead.
So Chief Fox is a retired three-star chief out of New York City Police Department, um, where he did thirty-seven years. He now, um, lectures, um, uh, across the country on leadership to Fortune five-hundred companies and many, uh, police departments. So we brought him in and we did a, uh, we opened it up to other agencies. And Fayetteville Tech actually split some of the costs with us to have him here. Um, and he did, he did an excellent job, actually. I was, um, Friday night, we assisted Fayetteville working, um, one of their football games, a couple of their football games over there. And I had three Fayetteville officers over in attendance and asked when we were gonna bring him back. They said it was the best leadership class they've ever had. And I actually did a email to Mr. McLaughlin to, uh, recommend that, um, the town bring him back because it's not just geared towards law enforcement, it's leadership in general. And it would be something that all, all town departments and other entities could benefit from as well.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, thanks, Chief.
I'm making motion to approve budget amendment number thirteen for six thousand two hundred dollars to cover the costs associated with the police and leadership course by Joseph Fox.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. We're down to our last item, which is G, update regarding the Hope Mills Rockfish baseball team and the Old North State League, and this one goes to Chancellor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, staff has been in contact with Barre LLC, uh, Ballred LLC regarding the current status of the Hope Mills Rockfish baseball team. Uh, conversations, recent conversations centered around, uh, the remaining improvements tied to the press box and ticket booths and whether or not the team was for sale. Um, Mr. Red did indicate that the team was not for sale and that he would check on the status of any outstanding improvements. But I would like to highlight the portion of the contract that we did execute tied to the selling of the team, just for, uh, your information. Section twenty-nine, assignment and subletting. The contract states, although Barre does not intend to sell the team, Barre retains the right to do so upon reasonable notice to the town of Hope Mills. In such an event, Hope Mills may elect or consider negotiating this contract with the new buyers or terminate this agreement without penalty. Um, so I just wanted to, um, address the agenda item by letting you know I have had direct contact with the team. They have indicated to us that they're gonna get back with us about, uh, the press box improvements, but they have indicated directly that they are not selling the team, or at least the team has not been sold today.
Thank you, Chancellor. There's, there's a, a lot of different opinions about the ball team. There've been rumors that it's been sold, not only the one, it's been sold twice. They're, they've abandoned Hope Mills and the press box, uh, it just was left unfinished. There's been all kinds of stuff that was said. And that's probably one of the best reasons is you want the real facts and the real answers. Well, ask the owners of the team.
Correct.
But at the end of the day, the team has not been sold. It still belongs to, uh, the owners.
That's correct.
And even if it is sold, then, uh, we would have to come back and negotiate a new contract with the new owners of the team.
That's if the board so chooses to do that, that's correct.
So I'm glad that we cleared all that up. I don't know where all these things start or how they, how they begin, but, uh, at least the truth is out there. So thank you very much for the information. Item eight, committee liaison updates of committee activities. I'm gonna ask the board if we could move item eight to our next meeting. Commissioner Legg is not with us. And I would like to take some time and ask our special guests if they would like to share any comments with the chief and with us tonight. So the floor is all yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd also like to say thank you to Commissioners. Um, on behalf of the school system, and we're sitting here tonight really looking at how Chief Dollinger, I've been able to work with Chief Doll, uh, Chief Dollinger, and I can tell you that, uh, he is the most deserving chief to get his award that you got tonight. I echo the words that you said about him and his staff. Um, coming in, I think I've shared, I'm a Hope Mills boy. Commissioner Marley and I would, we used to run halls of Southview together somewhat, uh, back in the day. But, you know, this is my hometown, and I'm, I'm, I'm very, um, I, I worry about all of Cumberland County. Uh, but really, tonight, we're talking about Hope Mills and seeing the community policing that's going on, going into our schools, tackling, like, for instance, vape, vape is a terrible problem. Vape is something that we, you know, back in the day, we had cigarettes, you could smell them a mile away. You can't smell vape that way, it doesn't work that way. So we have a terrible problem. And being able to get our SROs that you've been able to put in place, going through tough decisions that you made as a board in order to go through with that, um, they are making tremendous impact in our schools. And so on behalf of all the schools, I'd like to thank you for your, uh, your dedication to our students and our staff, honestly, our parents. Um, but I also want to publicly say thank you to Chief Dollinger and his staff as well because I know he is just a phone call away. And anytime that I've ever called in great need, he comes running. And every time we have a conversation, and Mayor Bellflower, you were, you, you and I have had these same conversations as well, it's really not about why are we here and what do we get? It's how do we move forward and how do we make Hope Mills the best place it is to live? Um, making it safe for our schools as we can. So I'm just gonna speak on behalf of the school system. Um, Dr. Conley, our superintendent, and our Board of, uh, our Board of Education, just say thank you for your dedication, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do, and, um, just thank you.
Kevin, is he back? No?
Oh, he, excuse me, he is back. I, I, yeah, he is, he is back, he is, uh, he is back working. Uh, he's got, uh, I won't say a clean bill of health, he's on the way to, to, uh, full recovery, and he is stronger than ever. So he's back and, uh, so, yeah.
That's good to hear.
Yes, yes, it is, it's a blessing.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners, Senator Appley, I'm so glad to be here, and I'm just excited. The, the last time I came, uh, to a meeting here, we were discussing SROs. The news had broken, we were all like, oh my God, what are we gonna do? So, so to be back here tonight and see that you, you, you dressed that head on, you hired SROs, you took the bull bar to horn, to use that term, and that everything is in place, I am just super proud. I say, I'm, I'm sure that Representative Jackson, uh, joins me in that. So kudos to you all for, for being here. And I know that the staff had a big part to do with that, and also the police chief. And also to hear how, I would still represent portions of Hope Mills and Fayetteville, to hear how the police departments are working together. I know both, both of the departments, and to hear that, um, i- is what leadership is about. And it's what makes your community better, it's what makes Fayetteville better, and in times when we have scary... And in times when we have scarce resources and scarce personnel, to be able to collaborate on behalf of the citizens is really what all of this is about. So thank you all for your leadership, and, and then congratulations to all of your, your new hires. I heard, uh, Francis and I, Representative Jackson, I was saying that some of them came from accounting. They were laughing about that, but, you know, you did what you had to do, and I'm sure that they'll, uh, feel very welcome at, at Hope here in Hope Mills. So, uh, thank you again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Senator Appleby. Come on, come on. Ah, oh, yeah, come on.
You know, I, I was going to say that I'm not always, they've already said, I'm a educator here in Cumberland County School, and I can say to you that as an educator, I wish I had that protection over there. And I'm not going to say well, because I don't want any halfs going on over there, but again, let's like Mr. Coleman said, and just like Senator Appleby said, congratulations to you. Um, I, I applaud you, but it's not anything like knowing that you can call on someone that's Negro, and we do on occasion Negro. Bathing in the sixth grade is real. Alcohol in the sixth grade is real, so there's a major issue going on, and I'm so glad that we have a bipartisan deal that we've already, um, it's already gone through the process, and hopefully we'll be able to finish that process when it comes out of the community. But I just want to say to you all, congratulations on what you've accomplished here.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Val. You know, one of the greatest things that's happened out of this is that we've got two major police departments that are working together. Hope Mills and City of Bay. Along with Spring Lake, if they need any assistance too. And they're all, they're all looking at, this school is, this school is in this part of this municipality or this municipality, no, this school is in Cumberland County. And we look at between the three police departments, how can we best serve that school collectively, regardless of where it's at? And that's, that's what we do. That's what people elect us to do, that's why we're in the jobs that we do. And like Kevin says, it's not how we got here, it's how we're going to go forward, because come tomorrow morning, the schools will be open, the teachers will be, know that they'll be safe, the staff will be safe, the kids coming into those schools will be safe, their parents can go to work knowing that those kids are safe. When they're dropped off, they know they're going to be carried forward by traffic control officers, and when they get out, they're going to have the same. And after-school events, it's going to be a safe environment, a safe community, and that's, that's about the best that you can have for, as a community collectively. So I thank all of you for coming and for the comments. Lastly, I want to ask our Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce President Marcy, Karci, sorry, Karci, I need to get it right, if she would come up, and I have one question. Can we have a state of the community, community presentation, sir? In February, can we do that together?
I think so. I said, we just got to get through chili cook-off, and I'm all ears.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, I think, and I know we discussed this very, very briefly, um, I'd like to see maybe an ad kind of committee, that way we can get it organized. Um, that would be a, you know, a discussion.
We can do that.
Yeah, I was, I would really like to see something where, you know, we get together, and that's the only thing we discuss, because we discussed a little bit at our board meeting last week, and we've discussed it here, and just to have the full circle of time, dates, plans, because we've, um, looked at this previously, so I have all my notes from when we went and did it before, but, yeah. So go ahead, we just need some more details.
Marcy, thank you so much. I'm glad your answer was yes. Okay, last item is item nine, it's, uh, information items. We know we've got Friday, October twenty-fifth is our Tronster treat. Coming up Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, Economic Development Committee meeting, that's our first one. Uh, Mayor's Coalition is coming up Friday, November first, and they'll be here. And then our next board meeting is November fourth, and that's Monday. Any staff comments?
Um, one thing I actually, uh, would like to talk about is the gazebo bell. Um, we've had some conversations about it, Don and I talked about it, and, um, we did a quick analysis, and, uh, there's a recommendation, uh, to remove the bell, because we want to expand the conversation to the full renovation of the gazebo. Um, while it started off as a, a concern about the, the actual condition of the bell...
I didn't understand that.
I think... But, uh, ultimately, the bell is the problem, when we went to look at the bell, the structural integrity of the gazebo is what we should be discussing. And so our recommendation is that, uh, Don and I are going to put some numbers together from you guys about, uh, something where we may close it off to the general public, uh, shortly, uh, just for a quick time, a quick, short amount of time to allow us to do the renovations, but I think that's where the focus should be expanded.
Okay, so, but we are going to remove the bell?
Yes, yes, that's the way.
We are going to remove it.
Well, now, it's, it's going to come back. I want to make sure you understand that. We're just taking it down to be able to execute renovation.
Well, the bell needs to go to Heritage Park Base Two.
Uh, that's the pleasure of the board, but that's another conversation for a later time. That's just my problem.
Because it was moved here to begin with, and now that we've got Heritage Park in place, it should return, but that's just my problem. The recommendations come up through, uh, Commissioner Marley's committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, before that bell will go. Okay, any other staff comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, we have a motion adjourned? Second? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
We are good.